We'll call the meeting to an end. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
And councilmember Butterfield is excused at present, one excused.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further, I'm just going to make a quick comment about the horrendous assassination of a couple legislators and if we would just bow our heads for a minute for those that lost their lives and for the families. I have a statement to make about the extraordinary rainfall that we had this last weekend, and we experienced an extraordinarily huge amount of rain, leading to widespread flooding across many parts of our community. First and foremost, I want to express my concern for all impacted and my appreciation for the patience and resilience of our residents during this challenging time. City staff responded diligently throughout the storm to protect the public safety and public infrastructure, and I want to recognize the wastewater department, whose team manually operated three lift stations during the night in an effort to reduce the risk of sewer backups into homes and businesses. Their prompt and dedicated work under extreme conditions helped mitigate the potential for more severe impacts. To provide context, our wastewater treatment plant typically processes approximately 4.5 million gallons of water daily, and it's designed to handle up to 7.5 million under wet weather conditions. Between Friday and Saturday afternoon, the plant experienced a peak flow of approximately 24.5 million gallons under wet weather conditions. Excuse me, I hit my notes and I lost it. Their prompt and dedicated work under extreme conditions helped mitigate the potential for severe impacts. To provide context, oh, I said that already, I'm sorry. Our Public Works Department also mobilized quickly, deploying barricades and traffic control devices throughout the city to help identify flooded or impassable streets and promote public safety. As the recovery process continues, city crews will be assessing infrastructure, monitoring ongoing conditions, and identifying areas in need of attention. Residents are encouraged to report storm-related concerns through the My Wilmer app, and that's at wilmermn.gov. We urge everyone to remain cautious while traveling, especially near low-lying or previously flooded areas. Ground saturation remains very high. Surrounding watersheds in Hawk Creek continue to experience elevated flows, increasing the potential for renewed flooding should additional rain occur. On behalf of the city council and all city departments, thank you for your continued cooperation and understanding. We remain committed to support our community as we move forward together. Before we go on, I would like somebody to propose, in addition to the agenda, by motion for the Wilmer Fest royalty presentation just after the open forum.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion for an amended agenda reflecting that change. Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Schulz.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Now we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Schulz.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Consent items, a call on for an A Larson or city clerk to review them.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, tonight for your approval, I have the city council minutes of June 2, 2025, the planning commission meeting minutes of June 4 of 2025 as a draft, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities draft minutes of June 9, 25, consideration of a city park special event on sale liquor license by permit holder Green Mill, Civic Center Arena special event on sale liquor license by permit holder Green Mill, recommendations to the Candy High County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, appointment of the Wilmer Housing and Redevelopment Board members, the accounts payable report from 5/29/25 through 6/11/25, and for your information, the monthly building report from April/May of 2025, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities financial report from April of 25, the finance report, and the directors' reports.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'd like to pull the directors' reports for some information only.
Okay. Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Tom, directors' reports?
Yeah, a question for probably Rob on the parks. We've got our queens here today, and we're going to have great festivities at Rice Park. And I believe the splash pad, A, our systems can't handle any extra water, so I'm glad that we have that turned off right now, but I understand that the splash pad is not working at this time, and at what point will that be up and running again?
Well, great question. Our splash pad controller went out. We had commercial recreation come out to diagnose the problem. We found out that the controller is out, it was bad, so we ordered it on June 9, and they said it would be about three or four weeks, so we're probably at that three-week mark now. I haven't got a tracking number yet, but we can get the tracking number from Public Works and see where we're at, but it's going to be a little while.
Thanks, Rob. That's all I have.
Motion to approve. Section L.
We got a motion to approve and seconded. Discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. The open forum, did we have anybody sign up? No? Okay. So then we'll go to the presentation of the Wilmer Fest royalty. Chris?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. I am not royalty, but I am here representing the Wilmer Fest Committee, and there's just a few things that I want to say before I get these gals up here. The first thing is, we just really wanted to say thank you for the support that city council, that the mayor provides for Wilmer Fest every year. This couldn't happen without the funding and support from all of you, so thank you so much. And beyond that, we want to give especially grateful thanks to Public Works, the Police Department, and the Fire Department. You know, it's like, I used to work in the city as well, and I know that when things don't go right, that's when you start making, a lot of people will make a lot of noise. But what I just want to mention is that we do so much for Wilmer Fest. This is a week-long celebration, and the fact that things are functioning in such a way that people don't always notice, I mean, they might see cones and things like that, but the amount of work that Public Works put forward, that the Police Department and the support of the Fire Department, you all should be really proud. You should be proud of the city, proud of what they do. So, the other thing I just want to mention is a little bit about the events that we're going to have. So the public events, the major public events that we're going to have are tomorrow, Wednesday, we're going to have Coffee with the Candidates at the Historical Society, we're going to have, in the afternoon, a Kids' Day event with Wilmer Kiwanis at Rice Park, Thursday we'll have Story Hour at Miller Park at 10:00 a.m., the Block Party starting at 5:00 p.m. in downtown Wilmer. Saturday, we will have the Parade at 10:30 in the morning, we'll have the Footleg Four at 8:00 in the morning, the Car Show at the Community Center, held by the Candy High County Rescue Department at 12:00 p.m., the Beach Party at 4:00 p.m., alongside the fireworks at 10:00 p.m. And the last thing on Sunday is the Fireman's Challenge at Robins Island, that will be also at 12:00. We have a lot of events, we would love to see all of city council, and one thing that I just needed to mention, I was told that I had to do it this way, otherwise Mr. Scott might get in trouble with either me or you, so I wanted to ask this officially. We provided you two Stinger tickets, and we're asking you to be there in the official capacity as city council members of the city of Wilmer celebrating Wilmer Fest. So we would love to see you Friday afternoon playing Bismarck, that should be a good game. Last thing that I want to just mention is a special thank you to all of our Wilmer Fest committee members. We have a number of our committee members who have children, many of them are brand-new children, and they put in also a ton of volunteer hours. We haven't done it yet, but I want to try to track how many hours our committee spends in a volunteer capacity for Wilmer. I have to imagine it's in the thousands, if not quite a bit more. So, thank you all so much again for your support, we're so happy to be here, and thank you all for the support of the city of Wilmer in general. With that, I'm going to be done talking, and I'm going to invite Thelma and Deena to talk about their year as our royalty here at Wilmer. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Deena Matheson, I am the 2025 Wilmer Fest Aqua Princess, and I am also representing DeShawna Hodges, our International Princess. She cannot be here today because she is mourning the loss of her brother.
Hello, everyone. My name is Thelma Benitez, and I'm the 2025 Wilmer Fest Queen of Festivals, and we're so happy to be here. Thank you so much for having us.
Yes.
So we'll first start off, start off, sorry, by talking about what we do as ambassadors for the Wilmer community?
So we not only represent our community in local events, like Robins Island, going to the hockey game, the Warhawks, and going to the community center for their various events, but we also get to represent Wilmer and create camaraderie between other events, as you can see, as we're cheering on some other girls.
We also get to develop skills like public speaking skills and small talk, which are very important in life, and we also get to have a leadership role for the little younger kids in our community that somehow we can be a mentor to them.
Next, we're going to talk about some events that we have done in our reign.
One of our first events we attended this year was the Clara City Perry Fest, and it's definitely one of my favorites up there. We started off by going to the rib fest, which we were so happy to do, the ribs were delicious, and we got to vote on which rib was the best, and we also had our first parade, our coronation, and we were so glad to have Clara City as one of our first, like, full-day events, because we have made such a close-knit connection with the Clara City community and their ambassadors.
One of my personal favorite events, other than Wilmer Fest, of course, is the Minneapolis Aquatennial. We not only got to cheer on Lea, the queen of the lakes, but we also got to represent Wilmer in the torchlight parade, as you can see on the top, which is a parade that goes all throughout Minneapolis. It was quite amazing. We also got to represent Wilmer at the Twins game and make so many new connections with towns that we usually don't see.
We also went to Glenwood's Waterama Festival, and that was so much, because it was our first time interacting with the candidates for the full day, so we got to see what candidacy is like in other towns and cherish how special Wilmer is, and we also had to meet another bunch of royalty that we haven't talked to, like the Sartell and Sauk Rapids program, since they are newer programs, so it was special to share that with them.
Another big event we go to is the South Dakota Snow Queen. We traveled all the way to Aberdeen, and we got to make connections with the new reigning snow queen, and we also got to make connections within Aberdeen. We played this fun game, it was called Frostopoly, where we went all throughout Aberdeen and learned about just the traditions there and the history, and we also went to the college, and we went to the Aberdeen Museum.
Next, we're going to talk about the relationships we have built with the communities we've visited.
In Silver Lake, we met the people of Silver Lake, the royalty, at the Minneapolis Aquatennial Torchlight Parade, and DeShawna, the International Princess, actually found out that one of their, one of their queen candidates was going to the same school. So we got to make, and she personally invited us to go to the Silver Lake Coronation. So that's just one of the many relationships that we've built.
Another close-knit relationship we've built over the year was with the Montevideo ambassadors. I remember as a candidate, they were the first group of girls to come up to me and just made me feel welcome at the Stingers Game, so just seeing them grow and just sharing each other's stories was really cool, and we were just there this past weekend, so seeing them give off their crown was really special.
It was. Another one we went to was Litchfield, that was our first coronation, and we basically see them at every event, which is quite amazing. We get to, we've just built quite a bond together, and it's amazing to be able to build such a tight, close relationship with a town so close to us.
And as Deena mentioned, we went to South Dakota, and we met the South Dakota Snow Queens at that event, and we have begun such a beautiful friendship. We were just with them at Montevideo, and we got to know them, and they are so excited to come to Wilmer Fest, so we're so excited to host them.
Yes. And the very last, not the last relationship, but the last one here, is Minneapolis Aquatennial. We actually do see them at every single parade. Either, of course, we see Lea a lot, but we also see the other princesses, Grace and Jaclyn, and it's just, it's such a beautiful relationship.
And now we're going to talk about how being a Wilmer Fest ambassador has impacted us personally.
So from a very young age, I always, I've grown up here, so I've always went to the Wilmer Fest parade, and I always saw the princesses, and I really wanted to be one when I grew up. So when I got the opportunity to be a candidate, I knew I had to jump on this. So it's just so amazing to be able to come full circle and get to be that for other little girls, especially in our community, but in other communities as well.
For me, I am an older sister, so I have grown up to be a role model for my two younger sisters, and one of the goals I made after I got crowned was that I want to be a better role model, not only for my family, but for my community and other communities, and I can say that I accomplished that goal, because I just feel so proud of the person that I have become and grown into this year, and just being a role model is so important to me, because we have so many role models in our community, so being one of the role models that kids can look up to has been really important, and it has made me a better role model for my family as well.
And then we're also going to talk about our favorite part about Wilmer Fest and the Wilmer community.
One of my favorite events was going to the Rockin' Ramins in July and August. It was so great seeing our community come out, enjoy some music, enjoy some food, and it wasn't, the attention wasn't on us, we got to be, just join the event, and seeing all the little girls stop by and just stare at us and just want to wear a crown was so special. And growing up, I used to go to Rockin' Ramins all the time, and stare at the princesses, so being the princess that they look up to was really full circle for me.
Another event that we had was Wilmer Holidays. It was so cool to be able to see the Wilmer community come out, not only in the summer, but in the winter, and also show the other royalty around, that Wilmer can be fun in the wintertime.
And lastly, we also represented Wilmer in our community at the Stingers Game and at the Candy High County Fair, which was so special, because we got to serve corn at the Candy High County Fair, which was really cool, and then we got to see all the awesome pets and bunnies they had. At the Stingers Game, it was so cool to see everyone just show up to support their local baseball team.
Thank you so much for having us, and thank you so much for the support that you give us.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, thank you, ladies, for coming in.
We also have a car.
Are you at home? It's okay for crossovers.
Any questions or comments from any of the council members?
I just want to say thank you for representing Wilmer so well and being such great ambassadors to the rest of the state, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Justin?
Just really quick, every year, when you all come to us and tell us about this, I'm always just amazed at the amount of time that it takes to do this, and so, you know, when we say thank you, it's for so much of what you've done, it's not like a one-time event. Thank you so much for all the countless hours that you've put in to represent Wilmer.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity, it means so much.
Yeah, it's truly one of a kind, like, life experience, and we have cherished it so much, so thank you for that.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $7 million general obligation bonds, Series 2025, and a call on our Finance Director, Tom Odens, and Michaela Hewitt?
Hewitt.
Hewitt?
Yep.
Okay, from Baker Tilly, and as soon as Tom is done, I'll open the hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Odens, Finance Director. This evening, we have two items for your consideration, one would be an ordinance and one would be a resolution. In accordance to City Charter, Section 212, any borrowing of funds requires the approval of an ordinance, which is also preceded by a public hearing. Just a brief overview of the 2025 Improvement Program. It includes a reconstruct on 20th Street Southeast, as well as four mill and overlay projects throughout the city. Bids for these projects have been awarded, and construction has already begun for the season, and as Mr. Mayor mentioned, joining us tonight is Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly. She'll walk us through the specifics of the proposed bond issuance and provide an overview of the timeline associated with our 2025 bonds.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Again, Michaela Hewitt, representing Baker Tilly. I do have about three slides for the action items tonight, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you have related to this action item. Again, there's two actions before you. First is the holding of a public hearing prior to adoption of the ordinance that authorizes up to 7 million of general obligation bonds pursuant to your charter. The second is to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds and set the date and time of the sale. There's a brief schedule of action items. We were here May 19, in which the ordinance was introduced at the council meeting. That public hearing notice was published on May 31. Tonight, June 16, is when council will hold the public hearing and consider the bond ordinance, and then June 28 is when the ordinance would be published, and again, that's action item number one. Here's a summary of the proposed financing for this year. Again, it is to finance various street improvement projects. This is a summary of the sources and uses for the 2025 A bond issue. If we look at the sources, the power amount of the bonds is the $4,175, which is what's being asked to consider for the authorization of the sale. There are other funding sources that will be included with the project, so looking down at the uses, the total deposit to project construction fund is just under 8 million, so the total projects in this year's budget are 8 million, but then the actual bonded amount is the $4,175. The timeline related to the sale of the bonds, again, tonight would be the ordinance public hearing and the bond authorization allowing the set sale for the bonds. We do have a call scheduled with the Moody's Credit Analyst for June 24 next week, following that review of the city's current rating. We expect the preliminary official statement to be published, and official, on July 11. And July 21 at 10:00 a.m. is when the current sale date is estimated for the project, and then the anticipated schedule would be that council meeting that night on July 21 would be award of the bids, and the proceeds would be received around August 14. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have, again, looking at two action items for tonight.
I think we'll open the hearing and let the public speak, and then we'll go to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak in regards to this ordinance? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for a motion. If you've got questions, we can address them to council. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. Just a question on our rating. Are we expected to be in the same place as we were last year, or with our short of cash, is that changing our bond rating?
Mayor, members of the council, the city's rating last year was AA3. We did receive some preparatory questions from the rating analyst in advance of our call next week, and the short answer is, we are working through kind of the scorecard analysis to see where the city expects to be, and if there's any considerations or items that might be, we'll have time this week prior to that rating call to be able to address those questions, to see. So at this point, I would say it's too preliminary to say if we have an expectation for any change.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So moved.
We got a motion?
Second.
And we got a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Schulz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gardner.
Gilbertson.
Gilbertson. Sorry about that.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
A motion passes. Next, we need a motion to adopt a resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of up to 7 million in GO. improvement bonds.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
And Gardner.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
A motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next is uh I'll call on Christopher Corbett and we're going to be reviewing the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan. And we will have a hearing on that.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today I am seeking a supermajority approval of to adopt the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan by resolution. Uh, this plan builds upon our two thousand and nine comprehensive plan, uh which was adopted nearly sixteen years ago to the date. Uh, as you know, we began the process last May by forming or with the formation of an eleven-person focus group. We launched online surveys, uh receiving over seven hundred responses. Uh, city staff have participated in over thirty um public events to engage with residents and understand community needs. Additionally, we facilitated two joint work sessions with city council and planning commissioners. The draft document was open for public comment as well as the future land use map. This plan reflects a broad input of collaboration, ensuring that Wilmer continues to grow strategically and sustainably. So I'd like to take a moment just to thank uh all of the boards and commissions, community organizations, stakeholders, city staff, and focus group members who are represented today in this room as well. And they all played a role in shaping this effort. But this effort couldn't have been completed without our neighbors who we serve and for all their feedback, ideas, hopes, and for the future of um Wilmer. It has been invaluable to guiding the vision of this document. So just a few slides that you've seen before. Uh, what is the comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan is a guiding document. It is a policy document as well. Uh, it identifies some of our planning needs throughout the city as well as address some of the policies and strategies to address them. State statute says that uh it doesn't require Wilmer to complete one. However, any community outside of the metro cities who wants to make zoning regulations or any regulations to our land use will have to follow state statute. So who would use this plan? You know, uh, we think about internally city staff and planning commission and city council, but business owners and other government agencies as well will definitely use this plan. Um, even businesses who's looking to come into the city and just to look at different land uses that we have. Um, city council, I imagine this is going to be a guiding document for some of your future decision-making as well. Now, I'd like to highlight a few of the chapters, um topical chapters um of the plan. So we call these the plan elements. Land use and development is one of our largest um chapters of the comprehensive plan. And basically, it lays out the foundation which we see development patterns happening throughout the city and future development where the use of future development can happen. Arson culture, mobility is chapter number five. Uh, in addition to the mobility chapter, we also added the appendixes of the Safe Streets for All um study that is in the document and feeds into the mobility chapter, just to make sure that we're having a comprehensive look at how we get around the city. Chapter six, housing, economic opportunities, natural resources and resiliency and that we collaborate with wastewater and Sarah Sisima, um our environmental specialists. On that chapter, parks and wrecks that we collaborate with Director Brungard. And the implementation chapter is very much the meat of this. This is how the work that will be performed and done, um it lives in the implementation chapter. That chapter is a strategies of all of the chapters in a combination of all those chapters and their strategies. Uh, it lays out long-term, medium, and short-term goals that we can um implement. And those are more flexible. The entire document is a living document. The implementation of it might not look just as it is written in the implementation chapter, but it's important to understand that we're looking for solutions for the needs of each chapter. So this, uh, I'm going to start by sharing a story about Wilmer and what we've really learned through through this process. So Wilmer is often described as a small rural town. We probably all can say this in unison, ninety miles west of the Twin Cities. Uh, but that only speaks to the geographic location. Uh, Wilmer is a regional hub for central, west-central Minnesota, serving as a center for business, healthcare, technology, and retail, benefiting not only the residents here within our city limits, but surrounding communities as well. Wilmer is well-positioned um with a strong transportation network. So think of highway connections for US seventy-one, US twelve, Minnesota twenty-three, and forty as well. And we have access to BNSF Railway, which is a key national freight corridor. This infrastructure has helped cement Wilmer's role as a regional and economic center um since its founding. To gain a deeper insight into Wilmer's history as a regional hub, we actually enlisted the assistance of Luanne Renigan, our city archivist. So on the screen is a picture of a plat. It is the original plat of the town of Wilmer. We were incorporated as a city in nineteen oh one. However, the town of Wilmer, this plat is from eighteen sixty-nine. This will become the guiding illustration for which the city wa- is developed. Bear with me on this slide. There's a few pictures that are cut off, but uh I think we can, we can work through it. So, Wilmer stands as a regional hub shaped by engineering advancements and industrial innovation. Rail remains one of the nation's largest industries, fueling developments. And right here in Wilmer, you'll see the, at the top left of the screen, uh there's a turntable there. That turntable was used to um reverse locomotives into um a different directions. At the top right of the screen is um ice harvesting. At the peak of ice harvesting, uh, Wilmer produced over a thousand tons to support rigid refrigerated rail cars operations right off of Foot Lake. And we did it until the nineteen sixties. As Wilmer grew, planning needs emerged, promoting or prompting city leadership to introduce policies um for the and prepare for the future. A few are on your screen. These are handwritten ordinances. It's not the easiest to read, the curse of handwriting, but um we got the gist that ordinance number eighteen, it was signed in eighteen eighty-four. It restricted horse speeds to ten, ten miles per hour for public safety. Ordinance number one sixty-four, it was signed in nineteen sixteen, regulated headlights on automobiles and motorcycles to improve road safety. And ordinance number two oh nine was signed in nineteen twenty-five, established parking rules, ensuring that vehicles remained one foot from the curb and five feet apart from each other. Now, I'm not sharing this to give you a history lesson, a lesson in Wilmer, but in fact, I wanted to share with you that a lot of surrounding communities look to Wilmer to enforce and to um adopt ordinances. These ordinances reflected community-driven policy changes and fit shaped the future of the region. At the top right of your screen, you'll see an article for about Lars Halverson, and he built a steamboat on Foot Lake. Wilmer is an envi- Wilmer has always been an environment where entrepreneurs and innovators thrive. This steamboat attraction on Foot Lake offer residents and visitors unique experiences. And a story that most of us might know is the Wilmer Eight. It became a pivotal role in social change. Starting in nineteen seventy-seven, eight women employees of Citizens National, National Bank, known as the Wilmer Eight, fought against workplace discrimination. They demanded equal pay and career opportunities, leading to a two-year protest that became a landmark moment in American labor history. So as the city of Wilmer approaches its hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary next year, it continues to serve as a regional hub and global economic contributor. Local industries like Novatec Engineering export poultry equipment to over sixty countries right from Wilmer, while companies such as Genio Turkey Store, West Central Steel, and Railco engage in international trade. And a fun fact is, and you may know this, but Minnesota is the top turkey-producing state. And Candy Ohio is the top turkey-producing county. Okay, I was expecting something, but okay. There you go. That's perfect. Wilmer's legacy and innovation and leadership drives regional development while addressing local needs through planning and policy advancements. So Wilmer is more than just a small rural town ninety miles west of the Twin Cities. It is living our vision statement that was crafted from this plan. It is a city of possibility and opportunity, diverse, thriving, and resilient, a desired place to work, innovate, thrive, and call home. So through the With Wilmer Comprehensive Planning process, we have identified key priorities to guide future initiatives. These priorities reflect collaborative efforts across departments, organizations, and residents, ensuring long-term growth and sustainability. It is important to note that the expectation is the staff will come back to planning commission and city council to provide annual reports on the comprehensive plan. Some of our priorities, future planning priorities, is to revise zoning code to align with the new future land use map, streamline development review processes for efficiency, encourage mixed-use developments in key growth areas. Throughout departments, we'll be taking a look at infrastructure and transportation enhancements, expand multimodal transportation options like bike lanes, pedestrian-friendly streets, improve road conditions and address traffic flow concerns, enhance connectivity between neighborhoods and commercial areas. For housing and community development, we want to support housing options and diversify our housing stock um for affordability and accessibility, promote infield development and reuse under, underutilized properties, strengthen neighborhood engagement programs, and for economic growth and business support to attract new businesses and industries aligned with the local needs, support small business development with incentives and resources, and revitalize commercial corridors downtown and downtown spaces. So I know I've, throughout this process, this year-long process, we're usually presenting to you texts or um our findings. So I wanted to take a second just to identify some areas throughout our city that we know might be a future need. So to complete infrastructure from, um, this is southeast of Walmart, Twenty-Fourth Avenue Southeast, there is a dedicated road there uh that is incomplete. And we know that this might look like in the future, a public-private partnership to access um the parcels that you see just north of the yellow dashes. On Pleasant View Drive Southeast, there is a city park there, uh, but it's not accessible. And so one thing that we'll like to do is relocate this park and to make it more accessible. There is also a dedicated street, so this too might look like a private-public partnership and things that the city can do to improve um undeveloped land that we have right now in the city. So in closing, the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan represents a significant step for in Wilmer's commitment to growing as a regional hub, strengthening local programs and implementing policies that contribute to the success of all who call Wilmer home. From historic policy shaping livability to entrepreneurial and social movements driving progress, Wilmer has long been a place of innovation and leadership. As the city prepares to celebrate its hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary next year, this plan reinforces Wilmer's identity as a thriving, resilient, and diverse community. The With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan ensures long-term sustainability by outlining future planning priorities, collaborations across departments, and posi- positioning the city positioning Wilmer as a city of possibility and opportunity. Thank you.
Um, before I open the hearing, I got a question for staff. The supermajority can, will we, is that just those in attendance?
Uh, it's a two-thirds majority of the entire council is required, which means uh six affirmative votes will be needed to pass the resolution.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing. If anybody's here to speak, come to the pulpit, give your name and address.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm glad to be here.
Hold the mic down.
Pardon? Hold the mic down.
There you go.
You suggesting I'm short? Before I do anything else, I want to thank you for approving my participation in this process. It was a lot of fun to collaborate with individuals from way different backgrounds and way different skill sets to come up with consensus and some real deep and wonderful understandings. The focus group itself um made this ten-year plan very different from previous ones because previous plans were made pretty much exclusively by city staff. Um, and and the city department heads, of course, know about the city and they know what's needs to be done and all of that, but it, this one said, we're going to go out and see what the community wants, what the voters want, what the, you know, and and they worked hard at that. Part of it was with our focus group. But more than that, they spent months reaching out to people. If there was a parade or a meeting or a celebration, the city of Wilmer would have a table there talking about the Wilmer Comprehensive Plan and asking for input. We had, we got input from seven-year-olds and octogenarians. It would, it just, anybody who wanted anything and had a view to share was welcome to share it. All these efforts and putting it all together was spearheaded by staff that you should be very proud of. Christopher Corbett, Chris Frank, and Leslie, that is, uh, they were great leaders and and they helped to keep this massively diverse group in line and together. It was good. Obviously, the final plan encompasses many, many initiatives, but I want to talk about one key interest area that kept coming up within our focus group, and that is neighborhoods. We saw neighborhoods playing a greater role in the health of our community. Proposed rezoning with some mixed-use um business and residential could affect greater interaction within the neighborhoods and a more open feeling. In particular, we saw the neighborhood parks as a potential path to a more inclusive community. In Wilmer, frequently, our individual organizations serve specific ethnicities and cultures, concentrating social interaction within their own group, so to speak. Um, we saw the neighborhood parks as a natural extension of what you city council people have already set our priorities. Safe streets, walking, biking, making the city accessible to to everyone and and thus more friendly. And and we saw that activities held in a ne- in a neighborhood park, whether it's a potluck or some kind of entertainment, could bring together residents in a fresh way and encourage friendships and greater understanding between groups. The ten-year plan requires the city council to reconsider some priorities as well as some funding. Projects are not necessarily costly. Some of them are, but a lot of them aren't. But they all require some seed money to accomplish. Lastly, I want to speak to the efficacy of the 10-year plan. I have been in situations that included my both building plans and creating plans, and on the other hand, approving plans, like you are about to do tonight. I know all too well the tendency to approve a plan like this and then store the document until 10 more years have gone on and you have to go through the process all again and you found that you didn't really pay attention to the plan, is all too, all too common. And so I encourage you to build progress into your, into your process. And by that, by that I mean, share, share the plan with all your departments and let them know they're going to be held accountable to it. Place planner view in the city council agenda, whether it's every month or every quarter or, you know, whatever you would deem appropriate. Determine your own priorities with the input of this plan and hold yourself accountable to it as well. It's important to respect the efforts of the staff and the massive outreach to hundreds of citizens who participated in putting this together. Thank you again for letting me serve.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the plan? This is your chance. If not, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I have letters to read into the record.
Oh, you got to read them while the hearing is open. Okay.
Yes.
I was going to call on you after, but, okay, if the hearing is still open, go ahead, Bernay.
Okay. The first letter is from Jennifer Lindquist. Hello, my name is Jennifer Lindquist. I am a resident of the city of Wilmer. My husband and I have raised three children in this community. I am writing to express my full support for the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan. As a coordinator of several leadership programs within our community, I have had the privilege of working closely with a diverse range of emerging leaders, stakeholders, and residents who are deeply invested in Wilmer's future. These experiences have reaffirmed the importance of having a comprehensive, inclusive, and forward-thinking plan to guide our growth. Wilmer is a uniquely diverse city. Our community reflects a rich blend of cultural backgrounds, professional skills, and lived experiences that make us strong and more resilient. The With Wilmer Plan acknowledges this strength and centers our diversity as a key asset in building sustainable future. For inclusive land use strategies to accessible housing and innovative economic development, this plan is not just a roadmap, it's a shared commitment to equity, opportunity, and growth. The leadership programs I coordinate, designed to cultivate civic engagement, professional development, and cross-cultural collaboration, have highlighted the need for intentional planning that aligns with the aspirations of our residents. Many participants in these programs have voiced the importance of affordable housing, multimodal transportation, vibrant public spaces, and opportunities for entrepreneurship, especially among underrepresented communities. The With Wilmer Plan directly responds to these priorities with clear, actionable strategies. A thriving future for Wilmer requires us to be bold, strategic, and united. This comprehensive plan is a vital step towards that future. It reflects the voices of our community, builds our strength, on our strengths, and sets us a vision for a city where everyone can work, innovate, thrive, and call home. I strongly encourage continued support and engagement with the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan. Together, we can ensure that our city not only grows, but grows in a way that is inclusive, intentional, and inspiring for all. Sincerely, Jennifer Lindquist. The next letter is from Michelle Maratsky. Thanks, from parks and playgrounds to smokestacks and railroads, the With Wilmer Comprehensive Plan was designed with visitors, residents, and businesses in mind. The planning team was collaborative, inclusive, and focused on creating a vision that reflects the diverse needs of our community. What stood out to me most was the genuine passion of Wilmer's leaders to make the plan a vibrant, forward-thinking document that incorporates strategies that make it a great place to live, work, and play for future generations. I am proud to have been a part of this meaningful work and, and I believe the plan will serve as a strong foundation for continued progress and unity in our community. Signed, Michelle Maratsky. The next letter is from Jonathan M. Marshand? Mar- Marshand? Dear Mayor and council members, the document before you for consideration for adoption, being the city's comprehensive plan, represents a considerable effort of cooperative work between Wilmer city staff and the members of the community, from the earliest stages of planning to public listening sessions designed to stimulate community engagement, all the way through to the finishing touches and completion of the plan for final adoption. In my time as a citizen of this community, I can scarcely recall a similar effort that has yielded such a forward-thinking result and a true endeavor to include and engage as much of the population as possible. Every effort was made to include feedback and opinion from members of our diverse community and especially to those whose voices may have been excluded or overlooked in the past. This plan takes a broad look at Wilmer today and incorporates many social and economic determinants within a future context to guide land use for future growth and development. As you consider this plan, please keep affordable housing in the forefront of your minds and take note of the Housing Plan Implementation Grid, beginning on page 162. Thank you for all you do for your ward constituents and for the city as a whole. Respectfully submitted, Jonathan M. Marshand. The next letter is from Dayling Munoz. My name is Dayling Munoz and I was part of the focus group that contributed to, contributed with feedbacks and comments regarding the comprehensive plan for the city of Wilmer. I am unable to attend the meeting in person, but I would like these remarks to be part of the record. I would like to say the city is lucky to have a wonderful staff within the Planning and Development Department. They were really helpfully, helpful explaining and guiding the process for us to participate as part of the community. This comprehensive plan articulates a vision of the city that actually considers what people think about their neighborhoods and what members of the community would like to see implemented. This was achieved with the surveys and all the data collected from that. I encourage the city of Wilmer to adopt this plan because it addresses critical elements like land use, the environment, housing, and public safety. The comprehensive plan will provide a great framework for achieving the city's vision and it is a great way to guide future decisions within city government. I think this is a key factor. We all know how difficult it is to make decisions, particularly the city, the city council members, and that could affect the whole community. This plan, in my opinion, will help with that. Thank you for reading this and for everyone's commitment to our city. Signed, Dayling Munoz. The last letter I have is from city, or county commissioner, Steve Gardner. Dear Director Corbett, I write in support of approval by the council for the new comprehensive land use plan. When I served on the city planning commission, it became clear to me that the tools laid out in the current plan were outdated and not nimble enough to meet the needs of our community today, particularly in entry-level affordable housing. Decades ago, our city grew organically. There were small houses being built with options for future additions as families grew. Neighborhood stores were, with living quarters attached or on a second story, were common. Neighborhoods were truly walkable, and there were even options for multi-generational living. Many of these options were outlawed by the advent of modern zoning practices. Oversized lots and parking restrictions, along with new neighborhoods that didn't allow for retail or other business development, contributed to the sprawl that many cities find themselves unable to financially support. Many cities cannot afford the infrastructure they already have and developers cannot or will not make investments in infrastructure by themselves. That leaves little opportunity for homeowners and small-scale developers to utilize their properties and their talents to make even incremental progress in addressing our affordable housing crisis. Fortunately, there is a strong vision contained within the new plan that I can support. I appreciate the work and, of the staff and all the volunteers who put their time and talents into the development of the document that will be the basis for future progress in making Wilmer a more economical, sound, and vital community with, with housing for all stages of life and that enhances homeownership opportunities across the board. Thank you for your time and consideration. Best, Steve Gardner.
The last letter. Okay. I'll ask one more time, anybody wishing to speak? If not, I'll close the hearing and call for a motion.
Move to adopt by resolution with Wilmer Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
We got a motion and second discussion. Vicki?
I want to say thank you for all your hard work. The staff did a great job, and also our community members. It's really good to see that, good to see all the input from the community. And I know that you, you and Chris worked really hard, went everywhere with this. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your, your work. I'll, I'll echo that. One question I have is, how much room is available if we need to adjust this plan? For example, if communities or neighborhoods who wish to participate in our great utilities and wastewater treatments, fiber systems, police departments, how much can we move away from this plan, should we need to?
Not quite sure I'm following.
For example, you got the urban growth boundary. For example, if, if there's a community outside that urban growth boundary that wanted to be a part of our community, how much do we have to follow this if we adopt this today?
If you're asking about how flexible the plan is, you know, it was interesting hearing some of the comments today. So the plan is a livable document. This is a guide for it, but it's a way to do it and identifying some of the needs. If there, for whatever reason, was, there's three points in the annexation part, the urban growth boundary, that outlines. Basically, it needs to be, the investment needs to be less than, or, excuse me, the investment into annexing is less than the benefit. So it needs to be a great benefit to the city to annex in. There's three stages, it looks like it is. Environmental needs, it is the feasibility of it as well. So making sure feasibility studies are done before annexing. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. And capacity issue, I mean, capacity, to make sure that we have enough capacity on public utilities. We'll partner with WMU to make sure that is, is feasible. And that's, that's part of the feasibility study.
Anybody else? Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor Reese. There's a lot of, in the resolution, there's a lot of, I mean, we made a simple motion to adopt the resolution. There's a lot of whereas in the resolution. And I think, I would encourage you, I know it was brought up before, but periodic review and some of the things that council member Gilbertson was questioning about, how do we make changes and be nimble and move with those? And so it would be helpful, I think, for us to stay on task with this, to have a, a plan, to have review done. And I know that's something you want to do too, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
One of the areas in our community is our downtowns, and I want to see that thriving here. What are some of the other ways that the council can actively support city-led strategies?
Thanks for the question. So all, what I'm thinking about immediately is collaboration with city council members and making sure that organizations and city staff that are collaborating with them constantly. Community engagement, so speaking about the plan and future initiatives and making sure that we're getting a lot of engagement for that. And one of the largest ways that city council can help is to make sure that we have consistent and policy that has a funding source to it. Just making sure that we're allocating resources so departments can actually implement some of the strategies.
Anything else? If not, Tom or you?
Yeah, I got a couple more. I like this stuff, so I'm a, I'm a planner. So the emphasis on housing diversity and specific code updates, what things are anticipated to support things like townhomes, affordable multifamily housing, even single-family homes?
So right now, our, and this isn't just a Wilmer-specific thing, but throughout the nation, you're going to see a lot of cities struggling with how to remove barriers to build affordably. One way, and Steve Gardner said in his, his letter, is that we kind of ruled out, so right now, ruled out certain zoning restrictions. So right now, our zoning code is from 1994. In order to move forward and make sure that we have a diverse housing stock, we need to remove some of the barriers that's already in place in our zoning code. And so that might look like allowing duplexes to be built outright in certain zones. And that can be accomplished through rewrite of our zoning code.
My last, my last one here, thank you, Mayor, would be, and, and Jeanie, you, you said it well with the, making sure that this doesn't get set on a shelf and forgotten about. What are the realistic implementation and long-term adherence to this plan? What mechanisms are going to be used to make sure that it's implemented and that there'll be either audits or checking in between your department and the other departments throughout the city?
Yeah, I, another great, great question. One thing is the annual review is going to be huge, but working internally too with city leadership, just to make sure that all directors are kind of taking our slice of the pie of the comprehensive plan and finding ways to implement. The implementation strategy is kind of, some tasks or strategies are ongoing and some are short-term, long-term, and medium. So we know that it won't happen overnight, but those planning needs are still there. And so reviews and updates to city council, I know, will be a huge one. And then not to wait 16 or 20 years to update the plan. There is, now we're living and working and learning so much faster now. And so five to seven years is a good timeline to kind of look at development patterns and the way that the city is growing.
One last comment. The emphasis on, on neighborhoods, I love that idea, that each neighborhood should be proud of that neighborhood that they're truly from. And, and having those parks be that, that hub where everybody comes together. I'd love to, to put an idea out there for other communities. One thing that we did in, in my neighborhood last year was we held an ice cream social right before the start of the school year. And so we, as well as two other families, went out and bought a bunch of gallons of ice cream and some toppings and invited the entire neighborhood to come on out to our community park to, and, and see the kids play and have some fun. So it doesn't always have to be a, a city-led activity, but something that you can just put it together right there with a couple other families and then invite your neighbors out to, to meet each other. And I think that's even more and more important in, in today's world where we don't necessarily, we drive into the garage, close the door, and we don't see our neighbors. And we need to, to know who's, who's there and to check in on, on them and put our differences aside and to build community. So I love the idea of getting together in the parks.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Childers?
Aye.
Us?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
And Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Now I'll call on you again on the Vision Zero.
All right. Mayor, members of the council, a part of completing the Safe Streets for All Plan, which was a reimbursable grant to the city, we have to adopt a resolution, the Vision Zero Transportation Safety Commitment. Basically, this is a resolution stating that we will work towards zero fatalities in road crashes, or, yeah, road crashes. The, this is federally mandated from the program. It allows us to receive grant opportunities in the future as well by completing this plan and passing this resolution.
All right. Call for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Rick? Rick?
Mr. Mayor, so you have to work with the police department then and the county sheriff? They have the accident reports.
Our local police department, as well as the sheriff department, was involved in the creation of this plan, and we did rely on them for data as well.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Childers?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
And Davis?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on our city engineer, Jared Vogi, in regards to the airport runway lighting system.
Evening, Mayor and council. Closing your packet this evening is information regarding the bids that we received for the Airport Runway 1331 Lighting System replacement. On June 11th, we did receive two bids for the project. Those bids range from an amount of $840,877 to an amount of $1,400,325. There are two resolutions, excuse me, in your packet this evening. The first being approving the bid for the airport runway lighting improvements. And that is being recommended to the low bidder, Design Electric, in the amount of $840,877. That is a first resolution for your consideration. The second will be approving the ASBID budget. And I would be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We got a second discussion. Vicki?
Any reason why their bids are so far apart?
I don't have a specific reason. I have an idea as it relates to the federal regulations associated with the, not only the bids itself, but the construction. The contractor, the low bid contractor, Design Electric, has done numerous federal aid projects. I believe they're set up very efficiently to handle those requirements. That's simply speculation. And it could also have to do with workload of the two companies as well. So that's my best, best estimate as to why the difference.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Rick?
I see our airport managers here, Eric Grunigun. Do you have any comments?
Nope, I'm just here to answer any questions that might be there. They look like, I mean, certainly a widespread in the bid. The other thing that some contractors may be doing is hedging bets on where, you know, not all of these LED products that we're going to be putting into the airport are made right here. And so with, with different trade things going on, there may be some things going on there. The good news is a contractor knows they have the bid, they can make their order, and they don't have to, you know, they don't have to hedge that bet if they don't need to. So we think this looks good. The timeline looks good, certainly sooner the better for the airport. You know, we know that we're struggling with all of our light systems out there. There's been a few times in the last month and a half that we've had to note them, a few of them out of service just because of of where, and again, this goes back to the the water problems that we have out there. So exacerbated this week, of course, but nothing, nothing's ready for five inches in a few hours. We're excited to move forward with the project, for sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, Tom?
Mr. Vogi, I appreciate the, with the lack of bidders of only two and being so, so wide apart, I appreciate the engineering estimate there to give us a better perspective of this, this bid. So that's all I would say.
Earth figure.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. I'm just curious where the two bidders are from.
Design Electric is from St. Cloud area, and the other bidder...
Did it say? Maybe it said.
It might be in here. I'd have to get back to you on PEC Solutions.
Tom says it doesn't matter. They didn't win. Excuse me. Councilmember Gilbertson?
Jared, I assume their bids were secured with a bid bond of some sort, right? So the, what they bid really is sort of irrelevant, the gap, right? As long as they're secure with a bid bond, we're good to go either way, right?
That's correct. They have been secured with bid bond.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
And Childers?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Go ahead, Jared, and take us into the resolution.
Sure. The second resolution in your packet this evening, Mayor and council, is to adopt the ASBID budget. The total anticipated project cost associated with the improvement is $1,211,456. Of that portion, $30,286 is the city or the local share, which essentially is a $1.18 million grant through the FAA and MINDAT Office of Aeronautics. So with that, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution for the ASBID budget.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Childers?
Aye.
And Osk?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, council.
Next, I'll call on our airport manager, Eric Grunigun.
Oh, I was just blocking out the door. I think we're done, aren't we?
Well, you got it.
Do you have something for me?
You have a proposal from Bolton and Mink?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council?
Glad I caught you before you got out the door.
That's right. So the last thing we have to approve here is the engineering contract with Bolton and Mink. And you see that proposal and the total dollars on the back page, the, in your, in your packet, as well as a breakdown there, a total of $175,000. And then you also see the engineering services that will be completed, including pre-construction meetings, construction supervision, and final pay, final payment at the end. Again, this is part of our grant system. So this is under the 95% federal, two and a half state, and two and a half local. So we would be looking for a $4,375 contribution from the city of Wilmer for this engineering solution. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Justin, and then Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did anyone else submit a proposal?
That's a good question. Councilmember Osk, typically, we do a request for proposals from consulting engineers. We're required to do them every five years by the FAA. When we have a company that is providing those consulting engineer services, typically, we do not see a competitive bid process for the projects in that five-year period. It's not to say that it couldn't happen, but typically, that does not happen. The consulting engineer has put in all of the original legwork to make it happen, the original design. And so for another company to try to come in and then do the same work without any of the background design would be very difficult. So it is one of the reasons that the FAA has, as part of their grant assurance, a grant assurance process, this requirement to do requests for proposals every five years to make sure that we are looking at the consulting engineer to be sure they're providing the best service for the city of Wilmer.
And when was the last time that happened?
We just went through this process about two years ago, yeah. And, or, I'm sorry, about a year ago, actually, with Bolton and Mink. And one of the things that's still up in the air right now, typically, we do not do a request for proposals for consulting engineers while there's an outstanding project. And you may recall that in 2018, we diligently submitted our revised airport master plan to the FAA. Here we are in 2025 with a conditional approval of that 2018 master plan, but not a full approval yet of the master plan. We did our RFP for consulting engineers just out of an abundance of caution to be sure that the FAA would not withhold any funding as we move forward. Interestingly enough, the master plan is recommended to be updated every five to 10 years as well. So as we get, hopefully, looking forward to that approved master plan, we'll certainly be starting to think about the next one. So.
Seems like really fast work for the federal government, so.
It's, it is a little bit difficult, and I will, I don't want to throw the FAA under the bus too bad. They are kind of chronically short-staffed, and they're doing this work for a lot of different airports in the upper Midwest, our ADO, our Airport Development Office. And so they're trying to push it out as fast as they can. Since we turned it in in 2018, I believe we have had either three or four different representatives representing our area in that ADO, that Airport Development's office. So there's kind of a fair amount of staff turnover, and then the next staff person that picks it up kind of has to start from the beginning because they're signing off on it. And so it is a somewhat disappointing process for us from time to time, but we do want to give the FAA credit for doing the best job they can.
One last question. How long has Bolton and Mink been the engineer for the airport?
Yeah, they were originally selected, I believe, in 2011. I could look to Jared, maybe he remembers, but I believe it was around 2011. So it was, they were not the contractor or the consulting engineer as the new airport was built. But once we were kind of up and running, then Bolton and Mink was selected in an RFP process. So it's 11 or 12. I'd have to look that up to be sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve?
I have a couple. The timeline for this project, because I think I read it, is start next spring, finish construction in August, final project completion in December. Am I right in that assumption?
That's correct. And that's a, it's a bit of an extended outline. It should be a tighter process than that. But we'll be working around some runway closures and things of that nature that will affect that ultimate timeline.
Between now and when the project starts, are we, is there things that are going to be happening, or is this going to go dormant for a while?
So our big thing will be the application. So we're not able to technically apply for the grant until we have actual construction dollars. So the next step for us is the actual application of the grant with those real construction dollars. But then it'll kind of go dormant unless, for some reason, money is made available. So we're using a combination of our entitlement dollars, which is about $150,000 a year, and then our bipartisan infrastructure legislation, airport improvement grant dollars. And so some of those funding mechanisms, we don't know if all that money will be available till towards the end of the federal fiscal year. And we felt like if we tried to stick it in right at the end of the year, we may run into construction delays. And that's why the date, start date was moved into 2026.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I, that was set up for the next two things I'm going to ask.
Sure.
There's roughly eight months of full-time labor built into this proposal. So in theory, Bolton and Mink is giving us a person for eight months. I know it's going to be multiple people spread out, but that's what you're, that's what's in this proposal. So just so you're aware, and everybody's aware, it's, we, in theory, get a guy for eight months full-time from Bolton and Mink. That seems like a lot to me for a project that's going to last for four months. All right. The second thing I have is, I do, it's a question on this proposal. I see, I understand the direct labor rate, the direct labor cost. I want to know why the overhead rate is 225% of the direct labor cost. What goes into that 225%?
That, thank you, Councilman Gardner. I don't have a good answer for you. I'd have to ask Bolton and Mink. That's a pretty standard number that I see on airport contracts, but I can get a, get a better answer for you for that.
I also see a 15% markup. So in theory, that's 235%, 240%. I work in construction, all right? We get told routinely 10% overhead and profit combined. So when I get routinely told 10%, no matter what my overhead is, I get told 10%. When I see 240%, that raises all kinds of alarm bells. So I would appreciate if we could figure out what we're paying 240% overhead for, or 225% overhead for that isn't direct or labor-related.
I can definitely get that answer for you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Gilbertson?
No.
Gardner?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Childers?
Aye.
And Osk?
No.
Four ayes, three noes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call on our Director of Community Growth, Pablo Obregon, for Arts Council Grant.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm here to let you know that Welcoming Week is getting organized, which will be our sixth time this year around that we are hosting this event, which will be on September 13. We have requested and received many donations and gifts from many community partners, not only in the city, but throughout the region and the state. And I'm here to let you know that we have received $2,500 from SMAC, which is short for Southwest Minnesota Arts Council. And I'm here to request an approval of accepting those funds.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Gilbertson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Childers?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
And Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. Next, I'll call on Sarah Seitzma for PFAS.
Yeah, so I've got three grants total to tell you about tonight. All three are related to wastewater projects, and staff is requesting a resolution to be passed for each grant separately to accept these grant funds. So wastewater staff worked with Bolton and Mink to submit all three of these grant proposals. And I want to say that we would not have been able to pursue these grants and these projects without their team. So the first grant is the PFAS Source Identification and Reduction Grant. This grant is funded through the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the amount of the grant award is $95,200. A bit of context for this grant and for the next one. You may recall in late 2022, I believe it was, that the city entered an MOU, entered into an MOU with the MPCA to have four samples of influent waste stream collected and analyzed for PFAS. So PFAS stands for Per- and Polyfluorolechal Substances. Great. Those are what we often always refer to as those forever chemicals because they have a tendency to resist degradation by environmental processes. So as expected, several of the PFAS chemicals were detected in our municipal influent. This PFAS Source Identification and Reduction Grant will allow us to complete sampling throughout the collection system in our service area in an effort to identify those sources of the chemicals. It will also incorporate a mapping piece so that we can move upstream in the sewer shed and really make the most efficient use of these funds because right now, running a sample for PFAS is about $500 apiece. So the grant does require a 10% match, and that is going to be fulfilled as an in-kind match of staff time, not as a cash match. Let me know if you have any questions on this one.
Does the grant include any actual treatment, or is it just for monitoring, planning, and design?
This grant is only source identification. This grant is only source identification. So it's only sampling, trying to identify those sources, no treatment. Depending on what the results are, either staff will work with, you know, residents on educating them on different choices they can make about what they're bringing into their homes and therefore what's going into the waste stream. Depending on if we find things at industries or businesses, then we'll bring in, might be resources like Mintap or U of M Extension to work with those businesses on product or ingredient substitutions, to use something that would be PFAS-free instead, things like that. But this grant is only source identification. So sampling, mapping along with that sampling.
Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Gilbertson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That motion passes. Sarah, take us to the next one.
All right. This second grant is also about PFAS and it is also funded through the MPCA. This is the planning and design for PFAS Treatment Grant. And this one is going to allow us to complete an onsite pilot study to determine the feasibility of removing PFAS from landfill leachate that is hauled to our wastewater treatment facility for disposal. We know that landfill leachate is known to contain several PFAS chemicals and several landfills truck their leachate to our wastewater plant for disposal right now. It's been ongoing several years. It's a great thing. This grant, then, is a great opportunity to determine the effectiveness and viability of a full-scale treatment system. This award is for $275,100. It also has a 10% match requirement, which will again be an in-kind match of staff time, not a cash, cash match. This is a pilot study only. It is not the long-term potential treatment system.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Rick.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Do we still take leachate?
Oh, yeah. We, absolutely. So Candy High County, we haven't been receiving leachate from that municipal solid waste landfill for about 18 months now because they have a treatment system that has been working. We do accept landfill leachate hauled from regularly four other landfills up to seven, some as far away from Iowa, depending on what flooding conditions are like and they, if they can't get to their main source or if their other treatment facility that they normally go to is overloaded, things like that.
So is that different than what you'll be looking for?
What Candy High County is treating?
Oh, that you'll be treating.
So we're going to treat the landfill leachate that's already coming to us.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Whether there's an opportunity to expand that service to additional landfills, if this pilot study goes well and we determine that it makes sense to have treatment onsite, that's absolutely part of the discussion.
So the state will be checking with you weekly or monthly or on the results?
They will not be checking in with us on the results. We'll give them a final report at the end of this one, telling them what, what this study showed us, what the feasibility is. We're using, the process that we are going to use for PFAS removal to get the PFAS out of the landfill leachate is foam fractionation. We know that works because there have been other projects that have been doing this, including on landfill leachate. So we're confident that PFAS is able to be removed from landfill leachate with this technology. There's also going to incorporate a destruction technology with that. What this study will do will be to determine if we're removing the PFAS that are present in the landfill leachate from the landfills we're getting from and if it's feasible to put in a full-scale, you know, long-term system, if that makes sense or not.
That to me, yeah. It's over my head.
Sarah, does the county have a system that treats the leachate?
They do. I don't know the details of that, but they do have a system. It was not originally designed for PFAS treatment, but they were able to add something in the last couple of years that they've been running tests on. And apparently it has been shown to be removing PFAS from their leachate. It's not foam fractionation. Aside from that, I'm not sure.
Audrey.
So what's the financial implications of us accepting this? I mean, you said that it was good for us, but why is it good for us?
For accepting landfill leachate? Yeah. So leachate's not clean, right? It's, it's all of the liquid that comes out of the garbage that we're all putting in our landfills, that can't go to, you know, just to surface water. We can't discharge that to the ditch or the stream or let it get into groundwater. So having that landfill leachate traditionally trucked to wastewater treatment plants, whether it's us or St. Cloud or Met Council, makes sense because then we can remove the, the typical wastewater constituents. So the total suspended solids, the nutrients, the other things like that, that gets removed from the water, gets sent to our biosolids just like everything that's coming out of our regular waste stream. And then we're able to send the cleaned water with the rest of our effluent to Hot Creek.
Why, why is it helpful for us to get other cities or other communities?
So it's technically is a financial benefit for, we charge them based on what the loading is. So there is, we're not making a profit on taking landfill leachate, but it's not costing us to take landfill leachate. We have the capacity both in what we can treat at the wastewater plant and just hydraulically. If it doesn't rain six inches, to take landfill leachate. It make, it, it makes us more cost-effective for the rest of our ratepayers.
I met with staff this morning and their concern of maintaining the bugs like they said. If we accept leachate, is that bugs?
No, that's not.
I didn't think so.
But our bugs can treat the landfill leachate just like the rest of our regular waste stream that's coming from all our businesses and our residents.
Because they were concerned about.
About flushing the bugs out of the system. Yeah, with all of, with 24 million gallons coming in, it was hard to keep the biological activity in the plant and not let it wash out with 24 million gallons.
Closed some systems.
They did. We've got really smart people working out there, let me tell you. The way their brains were working on Friday, it was pretty fun to watch. Their problem solving was, was pretty great.
Any other questions? Audrey.
Seems to me we've had a reportable spill or over something months before or like if we had more water than we could handle. We didn't reach that point or is that a concern that we would have to report if water was going out that wasn't being treated?
Right. Yes. So this PFAS would have no effect on that or implication on that. But as the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting, when staff were manually operating three lift stations, we were bypassing three lift stations because the pumps in the stations first could not keep up. So then we tried to bring out larger pumps to assist in pumping that wastewater through the station faster. And when the collection system downstream of that lift station could then not keep up, we couldn't keep pumping water into the collection system and keep it from backing up in people's houses. So then we bypassed the collection system, we bypassed the lift station. It ends up going into the storm sewer. That is a reportable.
That's a reportable. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we call the duty officer, we collect more samples. We'll have to send them extra reports. Because there was so much stormwater running in, groundwater and sump pumps running in, that was really clean water. It was cleaner than our effluent that goes out of the plant.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Our, our, our employees were very efficient and very smart moves on their part. We had one, see if I get this right, but we had one individual on a lift station that was out there almost all night. He was cold and wet and he was trying to stay warm off the exhaust of.
That was the 2016 storm. Thankfully, we did a little better for our staff this time and they at least all had trucks to sit in next to the lift station. Mm-hmm. We had three staff that worked all night Friday night that didn't go home till Saturday afternoon at some point.
Kudos.
For sure.
Anything else?
So by doing this project, will we get any bonus points from MPCA?
Will we get? That's a great question. I can say that the MPCA has been encouraging landfills to send their leachate to a wastewater treatment plant and do this treatment. The, the idea right now, and again, it's in the very early stages of problem solving of PFAS and sources of PFAS in Minnesota. But the idea is that it probably makes more sense to treat PFAS in sort of a regional way instead of individually. So gaining points from MPCA, I mean, I guess, yes, in the fact that we are willing to look at this and we're collaborating with them and with the solid waste folks, it's not going to make any difference on the fact that we had a release because of wet weather, but yeah.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
And Gardner. Seven ayes, zero noes.
Motion passes. Sarah, you can take us into the overflow and stormwater.
Yes. So this is the final one that I have this evening for you. It's the Sewer Overflow and Stormwater Reuse Municipal Grant. It's also through MPCA. So this project aims to continue progress to mitigate what's a more traditional problem-facing wastewater treatment facilities and quite timely, which is the issue of inflow and infiltration, or what we often call INI. So INI is the unintended introduction of clear water to the sanitary sewer system, whether that's groundwater or stormwater, whether it's through roof drains, sump pumps, foundation drains, whether it's from deteriorated older infrastructure that we know is cracked and leaking. Based on lift station pumping data, maintenance records and more, we know that the downtown area continues to experience significant INI. And this project will include both televising and smoke testing of an area of downtown. And then the results of that assessment will be used to develop future plans to repair and mitigate those sources or those areas of INI. This grant does not have a local match requirement and the grant amount or the grant award is $91,700.
INI, infiltration and inflow?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Right? Move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Steve.
More of a comment. After this weekend's event, I will say, thank you for the presentation on stormwater because I was able to educate a lot of people over the weekend and particularly people that were pumping their sumps down the drain. They're two different system. We should treat them accordingly. So thank you for educating me so we could educate other people.
I'm really glad to hear that. I appreciate your assistance in trying to get sump pumps out of our sanitary system. It only takes a handful, this is not related, I'll still make the comment. It only takes a handful of sump pumps in a neighborhood discharging to sanitary sewer to overflow a lift station. So I think people need to hear that more. It's only a handful of sump pumps in an entire neighborhood that will overload a lift station. We can prevent some of this.
Anything else? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Gilbertson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much.
Lakeland Drive Trail Active Transportation and Alternative Grants. Jared.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. Just an update as it relates to the Lakeland Drive path. Most of you will recall that during the 2025 feasibility and, or feasibility report process, the Lakeland Drive Trail was identified as an improvement. Council directed staff to pursue grant funding associated with that improvement. And this basically provides you an update regarding two programs that were applied for, one being the Active Transportation Program and the second being the Transportation Alternatives Program. Happy to report that the city was a recipient of both of those programs. The Active Transportation in the amount of $204,380. The Transportation Alternatives Program in amount up to $895,620. There is no resolution for you this evening. There will be numerous agreements and resolutions associated with this funding. That will be coming back before you. So this is purely an update and opportunity to ask any questions that you might have regarding these grants.
Questions? Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Council.
All right, next, we're going to go to, oh, announcements. I better take that first. Any announcements from anybody? Justin.
Just wanted to say thank you for a couple of different departments in the city. I had a couple of early morning phone calls on Saturday. One was that the police department responded so quickly and well too. So chief, thank you for that. You know, during this unspeakable violence that happened in our state on Saturday and the threats that were made that impacted us locally, your department provided extra security and did so just in a really quick and wonderful way. So thank you for that. And then as we were collecting all of this rainfall, I got a rainfall, I got a phone call from some folks down in Raymond who had been sandbagging to save their lift station and they ran out of sandbags. And Public Works provided, I think it was 2,000 sandbags to help Raymond. So just wonderful opportunities. Glad to hear that we're a city that responds to oil in those times of crisis. Thank you to your department as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Audrey.
All right. Not this week, but next week, the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference is up in Duluth. And I think there's some of us that are planning to go. But I would like to see, James Miller is in the room here, but he was, we were asked to provide a speaker. I'm going off the board this year and they, as a board member, they were asking for the city of Wellmer, did we have someone who could come and do a panel discussion? And so James has agreed to go up and do a panel discussion. And I'm looking forward to, and it's about festivals and activities in the community and how they work together with the police department and the, and Public Works and all of those things. And I think he'll be a great representative for us. And so I just wanted to say thank him for being willing to do that.
Good to know. Thank you, James. Tom?
Mayor, I'd just like to put my appreciation out to our police force. Two weeks ago, I got to go on a ride-along with Officer Lebel and got to really see what they are doing on a day-to-day basis. And it was a great experience to, to see what they go through, ask lots of questions. And I'd encourage all the other council members to go on, go on a ride-along or, or other folks as well. So, yeah, really thank you, chief and, and the department for everything that you guys do. You're truly, truly the helpers here in the community, helping out to keep us safe and to keep, keep the community a better place. So thank you.
Anything else? All right, we're going to go to a closed session from here.